Good evening. I'm calling to order the special meeting for the Board of Education. This is Monday, April 23rd, and we're meeting at the Fordice Building. I do that not because you need to know, but the camera needs to know. After the recognitions of the students, anyone who wants to leave is free to leave at that point. You don't have to stay. We know kids have homework and some need to get to bed early or not. But for those of you that are standing, know that you don't have to stay on the whole meeting. Okay? At this time, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I'm sorry. Oh, it's running up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That sounds good. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Do we have any additions, corrections, or revisions to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to public participation relative to the printed items on the agenda. If there's anyone that wants to speak to that. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to recognitions. Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hoen. This evening, we're proud to have a resolution recognizing OMEA middle school solo and ensemble contest participants, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Move by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith.
Okay, I'm going to read the resolution. There are many, many names here, and I want to apologize. I don't know all of you personally by any means, but I'm going to do my best with your names. But we will be handing out certificates once we've read the resolution into the minutes and the vote has been taken. So be it resolved that whereas top middle school musicians from across northeast Ohio participated in the annual Ohio Music Education Association Solo and Ensemble adjudicated event on March 24th, 2012, and whereas students from Central Middle School and Forest Park Middle School competed in both solo and ensemble events, which were judged on a scale of one to five for their preparation, basic fundamentals, technical skills, and music expression, and whereas the following students received a rating of one, excuse me, of outstanding, which is one, excellent, which is two, good, which is three, or fair, which is four, in their solo, ensemble, or ensemble performances. For Central Middle School, rating of outstanding on solo awards, Aleah Bachelor for violin, Alexis Graham violin and trumpet, Cora Huey trumpet, Mariah Workman cello, Sankova Guy viola, Kia Madaris violin, Danielle Barwick flute, Mariah Harris violin, Courtney Ritchie violin and piano, Cecil Boone violin, Terrell Johnson violin. Rank of outstanding ensemble awards, Courtney Ritchie and Alexis Graham violin duet, Cora Huey, Aleah Bachelor, Rayon Artis, Mallory Milicky, Alexis Graham trumpet quintet, Desmond White, Jada Gilliam, Sharnay Wright, Josh Ritchie clarinet quartet, Danielle Barwick, Desmond White, Josh Ritchie woodwind trio, Olivia Stovall, Deshaun Redden, Sarah Garza flute trio. For a rating of excellent on solo awards, Eddie Conger for string bass, Josh Ritchie bass clarinet, Mariah Workman on viola, Olivia Stovall flute, Emily Reed baritone saxophone, Sharde Woods viola, Deshaun Redden flute. Rating of excellent on ensemble awards, Kelly Latin, Morgan Manning, and Victoria Wheeler and violin trio. Rating of fair, solo award Serena Hollis for cello. Rating of good ensemble award, Mariah Workman Serena Hollis cello duet. That's the Central Middle School students. Forest Park Middle School, rating of outstanding on solo awards, Jason Johnson snare drum, Robert Greer trumpet, Jornese Cox violin, James Hocker bass clarinet. Rating of outstanding on ensemble awards, Richard Drennan, Marquise Given, Paris Norman on woodwind trio. Rating of excellent for solo awards, Selena Chandler trombone, Frank Hocker alto saxophone, Paris Norman clarinet, Nick Taylor snare drum, Sarah Morgan trombone, Marquise Given clarinet, Nigel Nevels trumpet, Joe Sudar trumpet, Zach Golden violin, Mary Powell French horn. And rating of excellent on ensemble awards, Jessica Bothway, Kayla Jackson string duet, and Joe Sudar Nigel Nevels, Mary Powell, and Sarah Morgan on brass quartet. Now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education extends congratulations to these students and their teachers, Carol Thomas, Jean Roblousky, Kathy Potovitz, and Jen Lehrer, and commends them for their outstanding efforts which have brought recognition to themselves and to the Euclid City School District.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we have a lot of awards, and what we'll do is we'll go in order. It looks like we have the Forest Park students on top, we'll see. But I'd like you to do students, if you would come up, be congratulated. I'll congratulate you, as will Mrs. Van Hoen, Board President, and when you're finished being congratulated, if you would just stand in the front while the rest of the students are being recognized from your school, and then we'll do Central Middle School, because we won't fit everybody up here otherwise. Okay, Celine Chandler.
Celine.
Celine here? Come on up, Celine. Frank Hocker. Congratulations, Frank. Jason Johnson. Congratulations, Jason. Nigel Nevels. Nick Taylor. Jornese Cox. It's okay, either way works. Congratulations, Jason. Mrs. Van Hoen. Zach Golden. Are you sure that Zach is here this evening? Robert Greer. Congratulations, Robert. James Hocker. Jessica Bothway. I'm going to appear to Jessica here. Kayla Jackson. Richard Drennan. Marquise Given. Paris Norman. Joe Sudar. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Sarah Morgan. And Mary Powell. Congratulations, Mary. And this is the group from Forest Park Middle School. We want to congratulate them again if we get our other audience to clap. We'll stay up here just a moment, students. I want to thank the parents for their support. I have a son who played the trumpet, and his early stages were really quite a challenge around home, so I know that it's always an experience and a little labor of love supporting them, and I want to thank them, the parents of these children, if you could stand up to be recognized and thanked, I appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I want you to take your seats.
I think in a couple of years, we're going to have an outstanding marching band and orchestra.
Yes, indeed. Absolutely. Okay, for Central Middle School, Aleah Bachelor. Eddie Conger. Mariah Harris. Emily Reed. Courtney Ritchie. Sharde Woods. Cecil Boone. Sankova Guy. Terrell Johnson. Kia Madaris. Rayon Artis. Mallory Milicky. Jada Gilliam. Sharnay Wright. Sarah Garza. Danielle Barwick. Alexis Graham. Cora Huey. Josh Ritchie. Mariah Workman. Serena Hollis. Kelly Flatt. Morgan Manning. Victoria Wheeler. Deshaun Redden. Olivia Stovall. And Desmond White. Once again, these are the Central Music Winners. Appreciate another round of applause for their great achievement. I'm going to stay just a moment while we ask your parents to stand for their support. Thank you very much. Do we have any of the teachers? It's hard to find every... There we go, there's one. Thank you very much for all your support.
Okay, we'll resume our meeting, and next is the contingency planning presentation by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hoen. I'm going to try to make my presentation from here by... I've advanced the PowerPoint from here. I haven't done this in a while, so we'll see how that works. If I have to make a move, I will do so. First of all, as the Board knows, we've been concerned about whether all four new elementary schools will open on time. This presentation relates to contingency planning in case one or more schools are delayed beyond a September 4th opening. First, I will highlight some issues, followed by a number of assumptions that went into contingency planning in case we have one or two schools that are not ready for a September 4th opening. These are draft contingency plans discussed at length among my staff, and I want to take a moment to thank them for their input and support in this process. If you have questions, Board, please ask as we proceed with this presentation, or you may save the questions till the end. Pat Higley and members of my staff will assist me in answering questions that you may have. First, the issues. Just as a reminder, Cleveland experienced the rainiest 2011 on record, most of it falling over the beginning several months of the project. It's one of our issues. By design, Shoreview and Bluestone trailed Arbor and Chardon Hills because of the bidding process. We also experienced some delay in obtaining notice to proceed permits at these schools. The one delay was intentional, but two weeks, if you'll recall, Board, which was because we were hoping for a more generous bidding environment as a result, possibly allowing some smaller companies to bid on the projects who might not otherwise be able to do so if it was all at once. We also had a delay of a little bit more than a week after that because of a confusion with the project labor agreement, if you'll recall. We had to get a special ruling at that time to proceed with the project labor agreement, which we got. So as a result, all four buildings have been delayed, but Shoreview and Bluestone lag noticeably behind the other two schools. One of the issues is we will need to tear down Upton Elementary as soon as possible because of the sanitary tie-in for Shoreview, which is directly beneath Upton, and is critical to the completion of the Shoreview project. One of the other issues is third grade reading assessment for fall is scheduled for the first week in October. In this district, we typically set aside Wednesday and Thursday of that first week, which are October 3rd and 4th this year, and you will note that all contingency plans attempt to avoid those dates. The Tots, Tykes, and Child Development Center will be relocated to Memorial Park, as you are aware. This is the easiest move, but complicating the matter is that the Child Development Center summer camp runs through the last week in August and beginning early in June, making the summer move difficult, if not impossible, even if all four schools are ready during the summer. Now for assumptions. By late May, we will know whether we need any of these contingency plans. Much will be dependent upon the establishment of tempered air and air conditioning, but at this point, we believe there is some optimism, which is beginning to grow, that all four schools will be ready for occupancy by August. But most confident we are about Arbor and Chardon Hills. Our contingency planning depends on at least two buildings being ready no later than late August. When I say ready, I mean to be able to move in. The contingency plans call for students assigned to Shoreview to go to Memorial Elementary if needed, and Bluestone students to go to Thomas Jefferson if needed. We calculate that Memorial and Thomas Jefferson can adequately house all students for a short period of time. This would mean that art and music won't have dedicated classrooms as they will in the new buildings, and the media centers will have to house classes, but we can fit students into those buildings in the short term. If necessary, we assume that the movement to Bluestone and Shoreview can be completed over the same weekend. Actually, there will be a partial pack-up of Thomas Jefferson at least in June, a complete pack-up of Upton because Upton needs to come down right away, as we have just described. We've examined actually four scenarios. The reason it says three up there is because we have a hybrid scenario ahead of us. We've examined four scenarios, which is one, no delay, which is what we are calling our summer scenario. Second is a short delay, which is our September scenario. A slightly longer delay, our October scenario. And in the event that either Shoreview or Bluestone is ready before the other, we may work a hybrid plan for moves in both September and October. Actually, some early moving is happening already in classroom materials, as classroom materials from first semester are being packed up. We have established the following abatement and demolition schedule, by the way. June 11th, Upton. That would start the abatement. The demolition would start at the end of the month and be concluded within a month. And that timeframe is still the same for all the others as well. June 18th, Roosevelt, turn over to abatement and demolition. If we are sure at the end of May that we can get into Bluestone on time, then we would turn over Thomas Jefferson on June 25th. If we are not sure, then we would wait until the fall of the abatement and demolition. We will need early occupancy permits from the city, allowing us to begin moving furniture into the new buildings, even perhaps before they are complete, you know, ready for turn-in, for ownership. The furniture will be moved in before the classroom materials will be. But we will clear Memorial early in June because most of the furniture there is newer and will be reused in our new buildings, so that will be dependent upon when those buildings are released, but we will be eliminating or vacating Memorial early on because of that. Tarazal flooring, which will be the last critical path requirement to be completed, and when it's finished, we will begin move-in of furniture and equipment. Each of the scenarios we present here this evening is designed to minimize the impact on students. By anchoring delayed moves around the in-service date in September and any OEA day in October, we will need fewer calamity days for students. We can't, however, foresee any but the summer scenario as being accomplished without using two calamity days, one at the beginning of the actual move time and one at the end, one for packing and one for unpacking. Once we have settled on which of these contingency plans will be needed, we will meet with the public in June to inform them, as well as publish our plans in writing. So here are the scenarios. Everyone's favorite is the summer scenario. It's our preferred scenario, of course. In this case, moving plans will proceed on schedule, as will plans for abatement and demolition, and all new schools will open on time. So that's... When I say open on time, that means September 4th. We'll go quickly through that scenario, because I'm not sure if... That's really not a huge planning scenario. The September scenario. In the event that either Shoreview and Bluestone are delayed by two weeks or less, or if one of them is delayed, we would plan to complete move-in in September according to the following timetable. As a reminder, we have selected this timetable because students are not in school anyway on September 27th, as it is an in-service day for staff. So September 27th... I'll get a little laser pointer out. September 27th, which is a Thursday, will be an in-service day. Students would be home anyhow. Staff will report to pack. The staff at those buildings which are being delayed would report to pack. That would mean that they would be not participating in the in-service, and we know that that is a weakness, but it is still pressing a need that we have. September 28th, which is Friday, a calamity day for students, but staff reports to pack, continue packing. September 29th and 30th, which is the weekend, movers will work over the weekend, and they actually will start on the 28th as well. We will pack, we will move as things are being packed and ready to go, but we'll need the two days to complete it. Now again, these are teacher materials and classroom materials mostly. The furniture and already things will be in before we move over the weekend, so it doesn't include all the furniture. This has already been accomplished. October 1st, which is a Monday, would be a calamity day for students. Staff would report to unpack. And October 2nd, Shoreview and/or Bluestone, maybe both. That's one of our assumptions, that they can both open over the same weekend if necessary. We will open them on October 2nd. That is the September scenario. That's if schools, or these two schools which are, we expect potentially to be delayed, will be delayed by two weeks or less. One comment. If we do have to move Shoreview and Bluestone on the same weekend, we may have to hire additional moving personnel to supplement our own staff, because it would be difficult with our own staff alone to accomplish this move. The October scenario. In this case, should Shoreview and Bluestone not be ready for the September scenario, or if one of them is not ready, then we propose an October move-in as indicated in this timeline. Again, this is if we are delayed by more than two weeks. As a reminder, we have selected these particular dates because students are not in school on the October 12th date anyway, because of any OEA day. So here we have October 11th, which is the Thursday, calamity day for students, staff report to pack. Any OEA day, no school, and for students or staff, movers can work that day without obstruction. If needed, October 13 and 14 movers work over the weekend. October 15th, a calamity day for students, but staff report to unpack. And then October 16th, Shoreview and/or Bluestone will open. Now again, this is if we need... If both those schools are delayed beyond the two-week timeframe. The hybrid scenario, the fourth scenario, not given its due in the PowerPoint. Both Shoreview or Bluestone are delivered late, but one is ahead of the other. That's what I mean by the hybrid. In that case, we would... Schools move on different schedules. Both the September and the October scenario would be used. A note about the Early Childhood Center. As I already have indicated, for several reasons, we are recommending that if necessary, we delay the move of the Early Childhood Center until Shoreview and Bluestone are in place and open to students. The worst-case scenario would have us moving the Child Development Center at the Tots, Tykes to Memorial Park over winter break per the following schedule. And you can see what that schedule is. Now, this is a worst-case scenario, where December 14th, which is a Friday, would be no school for students. Now, those Tots and Tykes students don't attend school on Fridays anymore. Staff would report as they normally do on that Friday, and they would begin their packing there. Now, actually, they could start some packing on December 7th as well, of non-essential items that they wouldn't need for the next couple of weeks. December 18th, which is a Tuesday, would be... Excuse me, I have not got this right.
December 18th is a Tuesday.
Yes, but December 19th is the... I didn't change this, apparently. December 19th, we're going to be in school on the 17th and 18th, so this is an error. December 19th would be a calamity day for students, and staff reports to work to pack, to finish their packing. That is December 20 through December 29th. December 20 is when winter break begins, not December 19th, so... And I made my corrections on my...
Yeah, and here, our handout is correct.
Okay. But I put the PowerPoint in, and I apologize for not having changed it. So those of you at home who are watching this, this December 19th date is actually December 20th that winter break begins. December 20th through 29th, movers complete the move to Memorial. It won't take them 10 days or nine days to do that, but it would be at their leisure to do that. January 2nd, which is our first day returning, would be a calamity day for students, but staff would report to work to unpack. January 3rd, classes will resume. Now, if the summer scenario goes into effect for the... Which is everybody's favorite scenario, then the Early Childhood Center can adopt the September or October scenario timeline. Okay? So, this completes the presentation, but you may have some questions. into the new buildings, even perhaps before they are complete, you know, ready for turn-in, for ownership. The furniture will be moved in before the classroom materials will be. We will clear Memorial early in June because of, most of the furniture there is newer and will be reused in our new buildings. So that will be dependent upon when those buildings are released, but we will be eliminating or vacating Memorial early on because of that. Tarazzo flooring, which will be the last critical path requirement to be completed, and when it's finished, we will begin moving of furniture and equipment. Each of the scenarios we present here this evening is designed to minimize the impact on students. By anchoring delayed moves around the in-service date in September and any OEA day in October, we will need fewer calamity days for students. We can't, however, foresee any but the summer scenario as being accomplished without using two calamity days. One at the beginning of the actual move time and one at the end, one for packing and one for unpacking. Once we have settled on which of these contingency plans will be needed, we will meet with the public in June to inform them, as well as publish our plans in writing. So here are the scenarios. Everyone's favorite is the summer scenario. It's our preferred scenario, of course. In this case, moving plans will proceed on schedule, as will plans for abatement and demolition, and all new schools will open on time. So that's, when I say open on time, that means September 4th. We'll go quickly through that scenario, because I'm not sure if, that's really not a huge planning scenario. The September scenario. In the event that either Shoreview and Bluestone are delayed by two weeks or less, or if one of them is delayed, we would plan to complete move-in in September according to the following timetable. As a reminder, we have selected this timetable because students are not in school anyway on September 27th, as it is an in-service day for staff. So September 27th, I'll get my little laser pointer out. September 27th, which is a Thursday, will be an in-service day. Students would be home anyhow. Staff will report to pack. The staff at those buildings which are being delayed would report to pack. That would mean that they would be not participating in the in-service, and we know that that is a weakness, but it is still pressing a need that we have. September 28th, which is Friday, a calamity day for students, but staff reports to pack, continue packing. September 29th and 30th, which is the weekend, movers will work over the weekend. And they actually will start on the 28th as well. We can, we will pack, we will move as things are being packed and ready to go, but we'll need the two days to complete it. Now, again, these are teacher materials and classroom materials mostly. The furniture and already, things will be in before we move over the weekend, so it doesn't include all the furniture. This has already been accomplished. October 1st, which is a Monday, would be a calamity day for students. Staff would report to unpack. And October 2nd, Shoreview and/or Bluestone, maybe both. That's one of our assumptions, that they can both open over the same weekend if necessary. We will open them on October 2nd. That is the September scenario. That's if schools, or these two schools which are, we expect potentially to be delayed, will be delayed by two weeks or less. One comment, if we do have to move Shoreview and Bluestone on the same weekend, we may have to hire additional moving personnel to supplement our own staff, because it would be difficult with our own staff alone to accomplish this move. The October scenario. In this case, should Shoreview and Bluestone not be ready for the September scenario, or if one of them is not ready, then we propose an October move-in as indicated in this timeline. Again, this is if we are delayed by more than two weeks. As a reminder, we have selected these particular dates because students are not in school on the October 12th date anyway, because of any OEA day. So here we have October 11th, which is the Thursday, calamity day for students, staff report to pack. Any OEA day, no school, and for students or staff. Movers can work that day without obstruction. If needed, October 13th and 14th, movers work over the weekend. October 15th, a calamity day for students, but staff report to unpack. And then October 16th, Shoreview and/or Bluestone will open. Now, again, this is if we need, if both those schools are delayed beyond the two-week timeframe. A hybrid scenario, the fourth scenario, not given its due in the PowerPoint. Both Shoreview or Bluestone are delivered late, but one is ahead of the other. That's what I mean by the hybrid. In that case, we would, schools move on different schedules. Both the September and the October scenario would be used. A note about the Early Childhood Center. As I already have indicated, for several reasons, we are recommending that if necessary, we delay the move of the Early Childhood Center until Shoreview and Bluestone are in place and open to students. The worst-case scenario would have us moving the Child Development Center, the Tots, Tykes, to Memorial Park over winter break per the following schedule. And you can see what that schedule is. Now, this is a worst-case scenario, where December 14th, which is a Friday, would be no school for students. Now, those Tots and Tykes students don't attend school on Fridays anymore. Staff would report as they normally do on that Friday, and they would begin their packing there. Now, actually, they could start some packing on December 7th as well, of non-essential items that they wouldn't need for the next couple of weeks. December 18th, which is a Tuesday, would be, excuse me, I have not got this right.
December 18th is a Tuesday.
Yes. But December 19th is the, I didn't change this, apparently. December night, we're going to be in school on the 17th and 18th, so this is an error. December 19th would be a calamity day for students and staff reports to work to pack, to finish their packing. That is December 20 through December 29th. December 20th is when winter break begins, not December 19th. So, and I made my corrections on my.
Yeah, and here, our handout is correct.
Okay. But I put the PowerPoint in, and I apologize for not having changed it. So those of you at home who are watching this, this December 19th date is actually December 20th that winter break begins. December 20th through 29th, movers complete the move to Memorial. It won't take them 10 days or nine days to do that, but it would be at their leisure to do that. January 2nd, which is our first day returning, would be a calamity day for students, but staff would report to work to unpack. January 3rd, classes will resume. Now, if the summer scenario goes into effect for the, which is everybody's favorite scenario, then the Early Childhood Center can adopt the September or October scenario timeline. So, this completes the presentation, but you may have some questions.
Does the board have any questions?
Dr. Jones, you were talking about moving the Memorial furniture out into the new buildings?
Yes.
And so what will the students that are attending Memorial from Shoreview use?
That is, Pat, you want to answer that? I can answer it, but you want to?
Well, we'll move the furniture from Roosevelt, current Roosevelt and Legion to Memorial, which then we would have to move out for the CDC, in preparation for the CDC. So the furniture that's currently in the district would be moved into Memorial.
Okay.
This is why we don't want to do these contingency plans. It's a lot of extra work. We want to try to minimize and eliminate double moves if possible.
I have a question.
Yes.
Earlier, you said the OAAs are off that week, on October.
It's only the reading.
But we would start school in our new building on October 2nd, and so we're saying the next day the kids are there, their second day in their new building.
Yes.
Okay, that's right. And then the other thing about the calamity days, is it only that building going to be on the calamity, not the district?
Correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Smith?
Not that my question needs to factor into the planning, because I understand that there's a lot of factors involved in this, and I applaud the district for coming up with contingency plans that it seems like will work. Ribbon cuttings.
Yes.
Again, not that it, not that we need to hear tonight how it's going to, you know, unfold, but are we considering doing the two schools that are on schedule?
I think we should, actually, if they're on schedule, to do them. But we haven't discussed that as a staff yet, and we don't have a recommendation to the board. We can play it either way.
Yeah.
But I think we ought to, it's going to be difficult to get them all coordinated at the same time, anyway.
Right.
So if we are going to, but we, I don't want to answer that question tonight.
Yeah, I mean, the groundbreaking was, I mean, obviously, we managed to pull off the groundbreaking for all four schools, all on the same day, which allowed community members to kind of come in unison and have a dedicated time to celebrate the beginning of the project. I think it was a wonderful thing for the community, both the Euclid School community and the community at large. And I, you know, maybe we consider delaying the ribbon cutting so we can do all four at the same time. But again, that's, I do not have, I see, obviously, I see the advantages of doing it as the schools come online, but, you know, this is, but it's more important that the schools come online.
Right.
That, than we have a ribbon cutting in some sort of, you know, succession or celebrate all four day, you know, all four buildings at the same time.
Right. Well, if the, certainly if the buildings are turned over during the summer, all four of them. It makes a coordinated ribbon cutting though challenging, no more challenging than a coordinated groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking, right.
But if the schools are delayed by up to five weeks, it might be odd.
Oh, yeah.
To wait the full, and it won't happen immediately once the schools are open either. You know, it will take, it will have to schedule that a week or two later.
Right, I just didn't know if you all had thought.
We have not, no.
All right.
I think the one thing I would say, I understand when we did our groundbreaking, you know, we were turning over shovels of dirt and, you know, the ceremony that we had there with the students participating and so forth. But I think when we opened the new buildings, we would probably be inviting the public to see them as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if we would be able to schedule two or three or four on the same day, because obviously, we're going to want to hear what the people say about it and enjoy that day ourselves. So that might be something to consider.
That's a consideration.
Mrs. Lysy, you have?
Yeah. I was looking at my calendar, and I know that we get monthly updates, facility updates. Did we schedule a facilities update for May?
Yes.
Which day was it?
It'll have to be the May 21st.
21st, okay, because I don't.
Regular special meeting.
Which is actually going to be pretty good, because that's as close, right, when we would be able to sort of determine whether or not.
We'll be very close at that point, if not there.
Okay.
To be able to say which contingency plan we're going to have to go with.
Okay.
When the tarazzo is put down, what's the waiting period for it to cure, do we know?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? So that has to happen. We'll know at least two weeks ahead of time when it's going to be ready. And then the furniture that's being reused, okay, like let's say, for example, the Thomas Jefferson, and you may have answered that when you were talking about Memorial Parks, getting furniture from Roosevelt and so forth. But with Shoreview, no, Thomas Jefferson, they're going to be moving right next door. So there's not the issue with the furniture, then?
Thomas Jefferson's furniture is, a small percentage is being reused.
Okay.
It's not the type of repair we would like to put into new schools.
Okay.
So that won't be leaving that school until it's ready to be done.
Okay. All right. And we're still going to be using the space at the mall for staging and moving and?
That's right.
What planners you must be. Because moving a house is bad enough, let alone four schools, so kudos to all of you. Are there any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I know this is like long-reached planning, but in the fall, there's usually all these open houses at the schools.
Yes.
Are we going to do that, and we have to do it sometime in the fall when they do the parents, but are we going to delay planning that until we know what scenario we're underneath, or?
Well, I believe we'll set the dates and then change the ones that we have to.
So we won't do one at Memorial Park? We'll wait till they get to the new school to do it?
Well, I would think that that was what we would do.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Ho. And staff, thank you too. This is the reflection of a lot of input from a lot of people over a long period of time. They've been talking about this contingency plan. You may have seen it on the cabinet agenda on many occasions, starting quite some time ago. And so, again, this is not a perfect crystal ball, but it is, you know, thoughtful and as accurate as we can make it at this point. Next resolution, please, is a Title I program changes resolution.
Sir?
Okay.
Let's put it on the table. Is there a motion?
Some moves.
Moved by Mrs. Sudhar, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Angelis.
Let me read the resolution into the minutes, please. Be resolved that whereas the number of students requiring Title I intervention services has increased steadily over the past several years, and whereas the number of support personnel has not kept pace with the demand for intervention services, and whereas district results in reading and mathematics assessments have shown little improvement under the current organization of tutoring, coaching, and assessment, and whereas core instruction in reading and math K5 needs to be more effective for all students to reduce the needs for extensive intervention services to students, and whereas we expect Forest Park and Central Middle Schools to qualify for Title I services for the first time next school year based on the increasing percentage of students qualifying for the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, now therefore be resolved that the district will change its Title I support services to increase direct support to students in need of intervention services, allow for more effective professional development in core instruction delivery in reading and math K5, and provide additional materials and personnel for Title I services to middle school students. I do want to say that this has been a challenging proposal. Not everyone is in total agreement with this proposal, but we have made this proposal for the best needs of, as we see it, to be able to resolve the needs or support the needs of the students and expand the amount of services that we provide to them. As a reminder to the board, I've left at your tables the current model and the proposed model, but this is paperwork you've seen before. And it was presented, but then revised a little bit. One of the revisions was the inclusion of the third math coach. This will leave a reading coach at each of the buildings to begin the school year. It will provide for additional support in mathematics in the coaching realm, and I'm recommending approval this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Okay. I have struggled and struggled and struggled with this, because I want to support you and your administration. I'm just, I, my heart just says, it's, maybe my head, I should say. My real concern is taking those leads out of the schools when everybody's getting mixed up. So you have all these new teachers, and you have new principals, and the, then if you don't have the leads there to help them facilitate their collaborations and their, and the instruction and so forth, I'm just really concerned about that. I understand the reading recovery change, and because it meets, as much as I liked the program and I thought it was beneficial, I think because we don't keep our children for long periods of time, because of the transientness of the, of our school district, I can understand that change. And I understand where you said that you needed the coordinator, because they need to be an administrator so that they can evaluate the teachers and the coaches and so forth, even though I'm not real happy with adding an administrator at this time. But in just going over everything that I've seen in that, I really wish this would wait one more year. I'm afraid that with all the turmoil, it's just one more new thing for everybody to learn, and I just think at a time right now, that would be very difficult. The other thing is, the board only evaluates two people, so any accountability for this model would not be able to fall on the new superintendent, because he's not making that recommendation. And you won't be here.
That's true.
And you're the only other person we get to evaluate, so, besides the treasurer, so.
We could evaluate him on that.
That'd be about as fair as, I just, my preference would be that we don't make that drastic of a change this, in one year. But that's my comment. Any other comments?
Just to clarify for me and for the folks watching at home, will the proposed model, if I'm understanding this correctly, will save the district $282,000, or is that a reallocation?
It will be reallocation of additional resources that will head toward the middle school.
And isn't one of the challenges of our Title I funding that it was previously designated for our elementary schools only, and now needs to be designated at both the middle schools and the elementary schools?
Correct.
So essentially, the reallocation, the need for the reallocation is because of the expansion of the Title I.
At least a good part of that, yes.
I share Ms. Van Ho's concerns for just the timing of this, but, you know, this, this, like many other decisions that I've been a part of over the last one or two years, the new schools excluded, you know, again, are not a decision between best and better or even good and better, but, you know, with diminished resources, are a decision between, you know, kind of inadequate outcomes. Because it would be great if the federal government would provide the money for those additional grades that we need to cover, as opposed to asking us to continue to do more with less, which, as I said, I want to say six months ago, the logical outcome of continuing to do more with less is eventually you're doing everything with nothing. So doing more with less is not really a good education policy, long-term or short-term. But, you know, I will support you with this reallocation of Title I funds, because, again, I think we're being asked to do challenging educational, we've been given challenging educational mandates, and the only way to do it is to reallocate the funds. And I think this is as good of a way to redistribute those funds as you could have come up with.
Mrs. Lysy?
Thank you, Mrs. Van Ho. Dr. Jones, are we required by law to implement a Title I program at the middle school for the 2012, 2013 school year?
I believe we will be, as long as the qualification is there with the numbers.
Seventy-five percent.
Right, seventy-five percent of Free and Reduced Lunch. And that the way the numbers, well, we won't know for sure.
Okay.
Until the numbers are in, but I think we are pretty.
Are we close?
Yes.
So you're.
We're over that now.
So you're pretty confident that we have to implement this next year at the middle school?
Yes.
Okay, because if we weren't required by law, and if the numbers weren't there, then my question would be, well, what's the hurry, then?
Mm-hmm.
To get this done this year? Couldn't we delay it until?
A large sense of urgency has to do with the middle school and so forth.
Okay.
I think we want to explain too, though, the, when you talk about this $282,000 for our two middle schools, it also includes the middle, the seventh and eighth grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades at the parochial schools as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so their, their services will also have to increase, but will they then experience a reduction in their?
The, what happens? Bertie, if you could correct me if I'm wrong about this.
Okay.
We understand that as the, the total amount of Title I money is what it is, and the number of students which would be served by this is divided into that number to come up with a per pupil assessment. And if the middle schools or anyone else, the parochial middle schools request the support, it would go to them on a per pupil. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to just add that the comment about the parochial schools, their allocation currently is based upon their low income, and so the amount that they would get next year is already set when we get our budget. So they either use their allocation based upon low income for K1, 5, or what we'll be seeing next year would be 1. I don't anticipate their income, their change going up any, much significantly.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, obviously, we're going to experience a difference in our elementary schools, because we need to take the money that we have to allocate some money for the middle schools. Would they have that same issue of having that set amount of money and then having to expand three more grades or two more?
There, the parochial schools are all only service, service using parochial assistance directions.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think the challenge will be quite as, because of the number of the students at the schools, the tutor percentage won't make it that hard to accommodate.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. The coordinator, the new K8 coordinator, would they be taking on some of the responsibilities of the literacy leads and the Tier 2 leads?
Yes, they would take on some of that responsibility for scheduling of tutors, the scheduling of the professional development, and for the running of the professional development program, all of which are done by the K, the literacy leads right now.
Okay. I sometimes think about this too, as being a new beginning in new schools with new leaderships and new staffs, and this may be a time to implement something like this, where everybody's starting off on a new foot and, versus holding back, and maybe another, this is another way to move forward. So, yeah, I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sudhar?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho?
No.
Mrs. De Angelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure. I'm going to have to say no.
Motion carries 3-2. Thank you. Items number six and seven are, no, excuse me. Number eight and nine are personnel-related, and Dr. Selig will represent me in these matters.
Thank you. Item number eight is resolution considering the educational program reductions and additions for the certified staff with revisions, and I recommend approval.
So is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mrs. De Angelis.
If I may, what we did in this resolution, as well in resolution nine, we left the positions and the recommendations from last time as is. What we did is we used a strike-through, so you can see where the changes took place, as well as using the bold font. So, if I may, the high school, social studies, family consumer science, and industrial technology, as well as a permanent sub, and one physical education, were a result of enrollment that has now come in, and the students registered for classes, and so we had to make the appropriate adjustments, meaning that we, last time, we were recommending a cut of a science teacher. This time, we're due again to the enrollment of the students. We will be adding that science back, but cutting a social studies. And you can see there the family consumer science, as well as the industrial technology, some cuts that were being recommended there. In physical education, we cut two last time. That was a result of the consolidation of the elementary schools, but due to the high school, we need to add back, need to bring back one more. So that will be a cut of one. And then you also note there the Title I changes. And the music, we had anticipated that last time. I think I sort of forewarned you that that would be coming, and so therefore, we are recommending a cut of one, as opposed to the 1.7. And looking at, then, the additions, the French, high school French, we are looking to add a .2 position. Currently, Mrs. Jones, I believe her name is, is teaching .4. She's a 40% teacher, so we anticipate increasing her time to .6.
It's one additional class period of French per day.
Okay. And, again, some more additions to the Title I. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Well, just a quick question. I noticed, so, like, for example, for the French, I believe at our last board meeting, we had to go through a routine non-renewal of contracts. I believe Mrs. Jones was not going to be renewed. But since we've added or increased to .6, will we be sending out a...
That was... What, because she was on a one-year limited contract, meaning she was a certification, a licensure issue? And I think she's in the process of completing that, so she should be okay for that. And if not, then we would then have to move to post the position
Right.
and hire.
Yeah. Okay. Very good, thank you.
Question on cutting the social studies position. Don't all the students need to take social studies? I mean, I just... I guess I'm just wondering how we needed to add science and how you can cut social studies, I guess.
Was this a result of class size? Dr. Smolik, I'm not quite sure.
So it was all of class size and also electives. Both of those subjects have a fourth year electives that students can elect into. Our physics teachers specifically, in part with the video that you guys saw, were very aggressive in recruiting students into a fourth year of science this year, so that the system would check.
Okay. When we go to the new core curriculums, are we going to need to be adding some positions back, then?
No, I don't know, so...
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoe?
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Item nine is resolution considering program reduction in addition provisions to the classified staff, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes, with the classified staff, a couple of things I want to point out. First off, you see there the educational assistants. We were cutting six educational assistants, but to add them later, the positions will be different positions, but it's a net result of no cuts to the program. We'll be just redesigning our program a bit, and so those educational assistants will be the Title I reading positions that you had heard about. The custodial and assistant custodian and general cleaner cuts that you see there, as you see there, they have a strike through there. And the reason for that being, we failed to notify ECA, which is the, you know, classified staff of cuts, per their negotiated agreement. All of them have different...
Or the timeline.
The timelines for their negotiated agreement. And so we have to retract those original cuts, but you will see them again in May. And you probably will also see some changes based on... Waiting to see what's happening with Memorial and Indian Hills. And finally, the cafeteria changes there. We did do a little bit of reorganizing due to the consolidation. So we did change some positions. We're trying to just consolidate and work a little bit more effectively in the cafeteria. And so those are the changes you see reflected in the cuts, as well as the additions.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
What's the change in the bakers?
I'm sorry, the change in...
What would facilitate a change in assistant baker or a senior baker?
Well, the baker's actually one exception. We had a baker and an assistant baker, and one of them retired. I can't remember if it was the... I think it was the baker. And so Mr. Yules didn't feel the need to have an assistant and a baker. So as a result, through attrition, we will not be replacing one of the...
Are we cutting back on our Sweetie trees in our cafeterias?
Yes.
Yeah?
Is that another way of saying... Part of our wellness plan.
Yeah. Well, good. And then I have a question about the educational assistants.
Yes.
Will there be special qualifications that you'll be looking at for these Title I readings?
Yes. I put together a sort of a list of, well, qualifications, as well as descriptors of what will be asked of them. But they have to be highly qualified. In order to be paid through Title I funds, you have to be highly qualified. In this instance, it's a highly qualified paraprofessional. So that's one requirement. And the high school diploma or equivalent, and the general requirements of which everyone else is.
And will you be providing them with special, like, in-service training that...
Yes. Yes. We plan on... We're looking right now to have three to five days of training. I'm not sure where that landed, but we definitely...
Prior to the school beginning.
Prior to school beginning, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoe?
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution considering the approval of the memorandum of understanding regarding collaboration, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis.
If I may read the resolution into the minutes. Be it resolved that whereas the Euclid Board of Education and the Euclid Teachers Association have negotiated in the 2011-13 agreement between the Euclid Board of Education and the Euclid Teachers Association, and whereas the board and the Teachers Association have agreed to make a modification to the agreement related to teacher collaboration, and whereas elementary, middle, and high school teachers have agreed to modifications in their school day to accommodate collaborative practices, now therefore be resolved that the board and ETA agree to a modification in compliance with Article II Professional Obligation, Section 2.2, Paragraph 4 of the agreement, which is on page seven. And I recommend approval.
Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoe?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Item number 11 is a resolution considering two out-of-district field trips, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes, these are both field trips from Central Middle School, and this was an oversight that we didn't have these approved well in advance of the trip. The trip to Washington, DC is a standard trip for eighth-grade students. We expect to have 25 to 35 students, with one chaperone for every 15 students, and three school days will be missed, May 16 through 18, 2012. Central Middle Schools Dayton and Cincinnati trip, and sixth and seventh grade class trip, for 45 to 55 students, a chaperone for every 15 students, two school days will be missed there as well, May 24 and 25. These are... We have already approved similar trips for Forest Park well at the beginning of the school year, and this is now to make sure that they are in accordance with what they needed to have done.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Well, they're certainly going to learn a lot in a trip down to Cincinnati with the Crown Railroad Museum.
We're down the Crown Railroad and going to University as well.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoe?
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is a resolution proclaiming May 7 through 11 as 2012 as Teacher Appreciation Week, and I recommend approval.